This is the Commissioner meeting of October ninth, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Moment of silence and salute to the flag. Tonight, I would like to take a moment of silence for those that have been affected by Hurricane Helene and those that are in the path of Hurricane Milton. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four, public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronics. Number five, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Schick with a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Proclamations, certificates, and presentations. We have three proclamations tonight. One proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that should be read on October 22nd by someone. I'm just not sure yet who is going to be able to attend that one. And then we have a proclamation recognizing Senator Steven Ouroho and a proclamation recognizing Assemblyman Harold J. Wirths. Both Senator Ouroho and Assemblyman Wirth's proclamations will be read at a future event. Number seven, there is no public hearing. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Deputy Director Carney with a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The floor is open for public comment. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, a second from Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Number nine, Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Schick.
It's been a very quiet two weeks leading up to this meeting. So the only thing I really wanted to say was I'm not very happy with the institutional report of the college that's been forwarded to us and has been made public. And I look forward, very much look forward to being on the committee for the budget. That's all for now.
Commissioner DeGroot?
So continuing my comments from last week on expanding agricultural programs at Sussex County Community College and Technical School, I wasted no time in meeting with Sussex Tech to explore opportunities similar to the ones at SCCC for Ag. Conversation included myself, Principal Gus Madla, and Laura, Sussex Tech's Ag teacher. I want to thank them for their time and say that was a productive conversation that educated me on their work-study program system and the different challenges I will need to face in order to implement a successful farm partnership similar to the one at SCC that's going on. The overall goal of sending Sussex Tech students to a farm for hands-on learning, work, work-study will be to send the students at the beginning of the school year of next year, so September 2025. That's what we talked about. This is something I'll continue to work on with Sussex Tech. We do have some time. As always, I will provide updates as they persist. Additionally, yesterday, I did attend a meeting organized by the Chair of the Agricultural Committee in the State Assembly involving myself, SCCC officials, and other presidents and Ag directors from New Jersey's community colleges. The conversation was about recruiting the next generation of farmers. I was proud to inform everyone at the meeting that Sussex County Community College was leading the charge in optimizing our community college program to increase enrollment and retention for future farmers with the recent work of our farm partnership. This was alongside President Conley and Dean Jason Frug, who I want to thank for including me in the conversation. From the Division of Health, there will be a Women's Health Clinic Thursdays, October 17th, 2024, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM. There will be a Child Health Clinic Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, as well as there will be a Health Check Clinic the same day, Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. All clinics will be at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. Please call 973-579-0570, extension 1275, to make an appointment. Lastly, Commissioner Schick. Deputy Director Carney and I attended the Sussex County Fireman's Parade in Hampton. Thank you to Hampton Fire Department for their hospitality, the delightful lunch, and for inviting us to be a part of the parade. It was terrific weather for it. Our fire departments and first responders are vital in the safety and protection of our communities. I extend my sincere thanks to the courageous men and women who commit themselves to serving as first responders. Your dedication is greatly appreciated. That is all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Director Carney?
All right. We'll be short today, believe it or not. I'll start with the clerk. I don't have anything complaining. Actually, I take that back. I do. The bridge on Main Street in Sparta, I drove by there yesterday. They're still driving cheating. I guess they ran into some issues. I keep everybody up to date when the time comes. I just thought that bridge would be a little further along. It's been going on for about four years now, not long. This one comes from the clerk. Per Jeff Parrott, I am pleased to report the income for the month of September 2024 is $25,577.56 higher than that of September 23. Current revenue for the fiscal year 24, ending September 30th, 24, is $212,054.81 higher than of September 23. Total county payments through September 24 equal $2,179,104.49. Oh, we're still doing good. Still selling houses. People want to move to Sussex, which NJ.com, that was an article last week, I believe, two weeks, a couple weeks ago, that people are moving to Sussex County, which is nice to hear. It's number one county in the state, by the way. Her NJ.com. The economy is number one issue during any given election year and never more so than with the 2024 election. Property Alert System as of August was 54. New enrolled to date is 1284. Daniel's Law enrolled in August was 13. To date is 642. Little briefing on District 24. Senator Parker Space is in the audience today. Thanks for coming, Parks. Assemblywoman Fantasia proposed a bill to the Assembly Commerce, Economic Development, and Agriculture that would prohibit the unintentional feeding of black bears. Current law prohibits the intentional feeding of bears. It's unintentional to intentional. Among the things this new bill will do is mandate how bird feeders are hung up as well as the month and time of the day they can be outside. Mandate how homeowners store their trash and language in the not only bans hunters from baiting for bears, but potentially could ban the baiting of deer statewide. So no more deer feeders. The bill entices enforcement by municipalities by switching the proceeds from the fines from fishing games to the municipality where the offense occurred. The bill was heavily supported by radical anti-hunting activists. So I listened to Assemblywoman Fantasia put it on the radio, ban bait, whatnot. So basically, you can get fined. I believe the first time's a warning, second time is a $1,000 fine. So what you're going to have, what she seems to think, and I agree, is people walking around the neighborhood, looking for bird feeders, getting their tape measure out, reporting to the municipalities, to the mayors, to the council, and ratting them out. So you're going to have people walking around. It's just, I mean, deer feeders have been around before my time. I'm sure Parker could attest to that, and they want to get rid of them as well. Little upset. On Friday, Measure Expanding Accessible Transportation Options for New Jersey Residents with Disabilities and Seniors was signed into law. The two-year program permitting taxi cabs, lincolines, and transportation network companies to replace New Jersey Transit's access link ban in certain cases will begin in four months. Assemblyman Ganemore was the prime sponsor of the bill, which is A2607. This is a statement from Assemblyman Ganemore. Our most vulnerable workers defend on reliable transportation to get the medical care they need, groceries, and life-sustaining services. All the New Jersey residents with limited mobility require more widely accessible service, but is especially concerning for those who live in more rural communities who currently have very few options. Expanding New Jersey Transit reach through alternate providers recognizes limitations of access link and the growing needs of customers and caregivers. Senator Space and Assemblymember Fantasia Ganemore are also pushing the legislator to pass a bill which allocates $7.5 million annually for preservation of land in the Highlands Region and extends the expiration date of special dual appraisal processes, process rather, I'm sorry, for green acres and former preservation program in the Highlands Region, which is A46727 and Senate 3466. About all I have, as Commissioner DeGroot said, we attended the Fireman's Parade. It was a long event. It was a good event. I know my hometown took home a bunch of trophies, which I was proud of, as I'm sure Mayor Silverton was as well. That's all I have for that.
Thank you. I first want to say I'm a little disappointed that Commissioner Hayden didn't make it to the meeting today, but I'm going to use my Commissioner comments tonight to talk about the Sussex County Food Pantry. This vital service has been around since the 1950s and is currently run by a dedicated group of unpaid volunteers who place food orders, take food deliveries, organize and run food drives, solicit and receive food and non-food donations, package and redistribute donated items, and promote the food pantry. I've visited the food pantry on a handful of occasions myself, met with these volunteers, and held meetings with various individuals who make the food pantry a success. Last year alone, the food pantry provided meals to 20,140 people. Donations come in all shapes and sizes via organized food drives such as Stuff the Bus and Cram the Cruiser, but the vast majority of food and non-food donations come from a wonderful angel donor. The food pantry receives approximately $10,000 worth of food each week from them. $10,000. There are no words to describe the generosity of the angel donor. Simply amazing does not do them justice. They have made an enormous impact on the residents of Sussex County, something that could never be matched. They have made the impossible possible. What breaks my heart is that the angel donor has faced repeated allegations of wrongdoing by Commissioner Hayden and his political consultant, who obviously have no conscience, and they do not care whatsoever about the damage they are causing to those less fortunate. Innocent people, innocent children, are caught in the middle of their political and personal vendettas against a former senator whose wife is one of the key volunteers. I want to make it very clear, in the past two and a half years that I've served as a county commissioner, especially this year since these attacks began, I have not witnessed or been made aware of any misconduct or illegal activity of any kind at, in, or surrounding the food pantry. However, the disgusting behavior and the spread of these untrue allegations are putting the food pantry at risk of being able to continue to even operate going forward. On September 29th, I received an alarming phone call that has caused me to lose sleep. I was advised that because of the baseless allegations and attacks, the county's most vulnerable may be at future, at further risk. I would like to ask Commissioner Hayden, although he's not here, what his plans are going forward to replace the $520,000 worth of donated food that we may lose each year and how he plans to feed the growing population of at-risk individuals, especially the hungry children whose parents depend on the angel donor's generosity. I wonder if Commissioner Hayden has ever spent a weekend not being able to eat or knowing how to feed his children or knowing when you yourself would have your next meal. Obviously, the food pantry's angel donor has put people first, Sussex County people, and not personal agendas. It's sad, especially as we enter the holiday season. Commissioner Carney, Commissioner DeGroot, Commissioner Schick and I, along with Sussex County staff and the food pantry volunteers, are grateful for the generosity of every donor who makes the food pantry possible, and above all, for the angel donor who has made it possible to feed almost 160,000 people in the past 10 years. As a county, a board, and a food pantry, we would like to publicly acknowledge, support, and thank them for all their years of kindness to Sussex County. The county has always tried to respect their anonymity. However, we cannot allow their kindness to go unrecognized, and I apologize that they have not been publicly acknowledged and thanked before tonight. I want to publicly apologize to them for what has been done to them and what they've had to go through. And I would like to ask my board if they would support a proclamation that I would like to have drawn up for our next meeting.
Absolutely.
So.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so we will, we will get a proclamation together and see if they would like to send someone, or if not, we'll just draw it up and we can get the volunteers to come and accept it on that behalf.
Can I just add, Director, real quick?
Yes.
You know, the county is very disturbing. I think every Commissioner, the majority of Commissioners here are here to do good, and then you just got one bad egg that just brings chaos to the county time and time again, and this is really going to hurt Sussex County, and I'm not sure how we're going to afford feeding what the angel donor did as many people as they did. So just one more thing that a certain person brings to the board that's really disgraceful and, you know, brings us all down, because we are a Commissioner Board, and people look at that. They don't look at individuals. They look at the Commissioner Board, and that's what's going to, you know, be mud on our face. It's really what comes along.
Yes, and we're, we're a good board. We have four people. We have to carry the weight for five because one doesn't like to participate much.
And even working with, you know, the Fairgrounds this year, they donated some money with the Chamber of Commerce, even the Sussex County GOP, having food drives every time they can. You know, it's like, you know, going backwards when you have this kind of disturbing person that sits on a board with us. And by the way, do we have a reason why he's here? Not here? I mean, this is about the fifth meeting that we missed. Just curious.
He just called earlier to say that he was a stomach bug.
Last meeting, he was going to leave early because he had a migraine, so.
All right. I'm just curious, Director, we haven't had any indication of anything from the AG's office.
Not that I'm aware of. Nothing from the AG's or the attorney. Okay. Yep. So the rumors that were out there that they had come here were not true for that. Okay.
How long, Director?
Uh, I think that was, uh...
Ten months?
Yeah, ten months.
September 13th. I feel like it was the first date.
That we started talking about the food pantry. Yeah, but the, the letter was probably back in March. So, yep. Okay. Can I get a motion to support a proclamation for the next meeting? Okay, Commissioner Schick, in a second. Okay. Do we need a roll call or all in favor? Okay. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. So we'll have that for our next meeting. Okay. Okay. Number 10, there is no consent agenda. Number 11, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 25th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting? Okay, Commissioner Schick and a second, Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number 12, we have no ordinances. Number 13, no appointments and/or reservations. Number 14, resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through O? Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, in a second, Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space? Yes. Deputy Director Carney? Okay. Awards of contract change orders bids. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through E? Okay, Commissioner Carney and Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space? Yes. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 16, financial. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List A for October 9th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space? Yes. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay. B, payment of Bills List B, October 9th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List B? Okay, Commissioner Schick and a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner?
Yes.
Director Space? Abstain? Deputy Director Carney? Okay, 17, personnel. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda for October 9th, 2024? Okay, Deputy Director Carney, in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space? Yes. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, number 18, administrative report.
I'm getting a smile from my CFO over there, so I want to thank everyone for the appreciation. I personally thank each one. Others was mine, so thank you. I really do appreciate it. I got, real brief, but I guess the most significant thing that happened this past week was, in the past two weeks, we had a meeting with JCPN L, with District 24 and a handful of the mayors, to talk about the billing that happened through the enormous bills that were received by our residents through June and July, and what some of those effects were. The theory was that they started instituting these new smart meters, and they thought that had some issue with it, but come to find out, the smart meters were very accurate and very dependable. What had happened, call it an excuse or what have you, how they communicated what happened during June and July was two things. One was a rate increase for the generation of power and another rate increase for the powered distribution. So those two things were two different rates in your bill. They commented that they don't have any control over those rates. They are just pass-throughs from it, but it goes to the customer nonetheless. And I don't know anybody that gets electricity that doesn't think that JCPN L is everything. They don't understand that somebody else generates the power, somebody else distributes it. It's all a bill that comes from JCPN L. The second thing that happened, June and July, as we all know, they had the significant heat, and what they commented on was not just during the day, it was heat at night as well. And people were using their air conditioners twice as much as what they normally use through that particular timeframe. The other thing that we learned out of that that I didn't understand until now is that they have two different rates. They have a winter rate that runs through October through May, and then they have a summer rate that runs through May and October. Well, in their summer rate, if you stay below 600 kilowatts per month, you get a 2%, it's a 2 cents on the rate. If you go over that 600, it's 7 cents a rate. So everybody that in that June and July era was, that used their systems more than that 600 kilowatt, was getting not only whacked over to 600, but going to that 2 cents to 7 cents. So everybody's bill was going, it was doubling in some cases. So they were kind enough to take information from some of the area mayors that had, their constituents just, well, was having a hard time paying it, and wanted to know what the reasons were. They took those bills, and they're going to go through those one by one, but that was the significant things that they said that was going to happen. They still are focused. They put $50 million in for vegetation management. I'll be glad to see it, because the county's been working very hard to do the same. We put a lot of effort in that this year through opera money and such, so we put a quarter of a million dollars toward that this year. So all the help we can get from them is greatly appreciated, but it was a very interesting meeting, to say the least.
Ron, just two quick questions. One, $50 million, that's probably through their whole area.
It is. That's the state.
So what does that have to do with Sussex?
Don't know yet. You couldn't answer that question.
Maybe next we need to just find that out.
Oh, absolutely.
These, these new rates, is this due to that, the infrastructure?
No. Oh, there's more. Those rates were just, these were the annual increases that come from either the BPU or the state BPU. They're allowed to increase. And I believe the energy generation was something like three point something, and the transmissions was like eight point something. And what I commented to them, I said, they got a perception issue, because what was it, three, four months ago, you as a board approved a resolution for, to increase the rates for infrastructure improvements. They haven't even started that yet. And, yeah.
We didn't.
We didn't?
We did not.
We were asked to. I thought we did.
We were asked to a year ago. We never did that.
Good, good, because they don't know what that even means.
If they're looking for that, and I'll just speak for myself, they need to come back up in front of us and explain what's going on. I find it hard to believe that June and July was hotter than the past years.
That's what I was thinking, the same thing.
I don't buy that whatsoever. I think that's a little BS.
Some people's $700 electric bills and...
Something else is going on, but they can come in front of us and explain why.
I'd be more than happy to invite them.
Yeah.
That was...
If they want a resolution, now these from me.
Oh, I agree.
They don't even have the, they don't even have the approval for the, they didn't even have the organizational approval for the infrastructure improvement.
I'm all for infrastructure, for sure, and the power's down. We don't have enough power and all the cars being pushed on us for electric cars and whatnot. That's fine and dandy, but they need to explain what's going on, how much this is going to cost, and realistically, why are these rates are going up? And why that June and July was that hot? I don't sweat that much, but it wasn't that hot.
So anyway, that's all I had for the week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, County Council report.
Not much for public session. Contracts have been exchanged on most of the real estate matters we have. Jails moving along. I should have resolutions and stuff ready for you guys by the next meeting, I think. So a couple things to clear with you guys in terms of that before the evening ends, but other than that, I think we're ready to roll.
Good. Okay, unfinished business. Anyone have any unfinished? No. Okay. New business. I have new business. We have had some talks, you know, some of the Commissioners, about dress code policy. Did you make copies for me? You forget. Okay. So I just, I will read it in. I have a resolution I would like the board to approve. Dress code policy for Sussex County Commissioner Board, whereas, and this will also go in the handbook of the county, whereas Sussex County requires employees to be neat and orderly and dressed appropriately for the work they perform, employees must also present themselves professionally and avoid casual and suggestive attire or hats or other clothing of a similar nature that does not present a business-like appearance; and whereas, it is the desire of the board to adopt a similar policy for Commissioner Board meetings; and whereas, commissioners shall be dressed in business attire while attending Commissioner meetings; and whereas, the following attire is inappropriate to be worn by commissioners when attending meetings of the Commissioner Board. Jeans, dirty and/or torn clothing, T-shirts or sweatshirts with, which advertise... My watch. Jeans, dirty and/or torn...
It doesn't look like you have an app named "My Watch." You can search great.
Really annoying. Okay. Attire that displays advertisement such as contractor and/or vendor information, halter tops or clothing that exposes the midriff, sundresses and/or tops with spaghetti straps without any covering, shorts excluding squirts, spandex clothing or clothing generally worn for exercise, clothing worn so that undergarments are readily visible, undergarments worn as outerwear, transparent clothing, excessive piercing of visible body parts including connecting chains, beach wear including flip-flops or similar footwear that may pose a safety hazard, sneakers and/or work boots. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners does hereby adopt this policy as part of the conduct of the Commissioner Board meeting. Any discussion?
Yes, Director. I like everything you have. I would like to have everybody here, because it seems like when all the Commissioners aren't here, it causes a problem.
Yes. So we will put this for our next meeting.
For our next meeting. That way, we're all here. Hopefully, we're all here.
And then this way, we can get Christina a copy, and if anyone wants to edit something on it, in the meantime, because I would like to make it for not just Commissioner meetings, but other meetings that we attend to.
All we board meetings.
All, all our meetings that we have in this building.
Yeah, that we represent.
Yeah. Yeah, committee meetings. Yeah. Okay, we'll do that. We'll do that. We'll table that. We'll do that on our next meeting. Thank you.
Can you put a deadline on that, though, in case we should have four people on the board more than one more time?
I think two weeks would be suffice, no matter what.
I think, I think we'll just do it next time. Yeah, as long as we have a quorum. Yeah, I'm good. Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Okay. Number 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Commissioner DeGroot, in a second. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the floor is open. Three minutes or less.
I wanted to reiterate that.
Yes. Yes.
Deborah Card, Partizan, I would add to your, I think it's great. I absolutely do. But I would add, when you're representing the Commission Board, because I saw a couple things in the newspaper recently, and I cringed, because the picture was, wasn't very professional. and I cringed, because the picture was, wasn't very professional. So I would just add that, that's just a suggestion, do what you want. The second question I have is for the, I know we were working on trying to get the food pantry litigate legally, right? They were trying to do paperwork with the, did that ever get done, or that kinda got dropped when they gave you?
No, the county has filed paperwork.
So, there were five oh?
No, they're not registered to operate as a food pantry. They're officially registered with the county.
So where that paperwork was reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Director?
Yes.
I just saw Mrs. Brennan walk in.
Yes.
She wants to make a comment, I'm not sure she's aware that it's a public session.
Yes.
Second public comment, rather. I don't know if you want to let her know that?
Yeah. Oh, this is, Mrs. Brennan?
Ms. Brennan.
Ms. Brennan? Did, this is our second public comment, this isn't the agenda, so Deputy Director Carney was just wondering if you wanted to make a comment. You probably missed my commissioner comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm taking a class at the college, and I'm just kind of in and out, so I apologize for that.
Yes, just say your name and your...
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't even want to speak.
Thank you. Kathy Brennan, Amton Township. I, I appreciate this. Like I said, I am taking a class, so I'm kind of like in the middle of class, and I have to kind of run out, and then I have to kind of like run back to the class, so I'm a little discombobled with my schedule, but, so thank you again. Yeah, basically, I'm here to, you know, the same reason I come every, every time or whatever, basically I'm here to say, you know, the same situation is still going on, very concerned about, you know, what's going on, and how it's affecting the reputation of the county, and I don't know this for a fact, but I have heard rumors that the commissioner has said he will not run for reelection. Like I said, that's just a rumor, don't know that it's true. If it is true, I would be very happy with that. I think we need someone else in here who is going to be interested in what's going on in the county, helping the people, and getting, getting the job done rather than, for lack of a better term, causing lots of chaos. And that's, basically, it's a safe thing, I will reiterate, you know, that I say every time, I wish that he would have resigned. Obviously, that's not gonna happen. I'm just concerned that there's county business that could be conducted that isn't being conducted, because time is being wasted on what is not necessarily what has to be done. And the food pantry, whatever you want to call it, I don't want to call it a scandal, because I don't feel it's a scandal, diversion maybe I would call it, I feel it's just detrimental to the county, and I think we need people in here who are here to help the county, not to take names for themselves. And thank you.
Thank you. You might have missed my comments, I don't know, were you here during the commissioner comments before?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you, you might have missed it, you might want to listen to the audio, I think you'll be pleased with my commissioner comments, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm fighting back.
I appreciate you giving me the time, like I said, I'm on a crazy schedule right now.
Okay, we're gonna, we're, we're going to have a proclamation next meeting for the angel donor of the food pantry, and I don't know if they'll be here, but we're gonna thank them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, with a second, from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?